All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is now nine o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so on our agenda, we had the invocation for Commissioner Spence. She has since synodet, opening up an opportunity. I believe Commissioner Morris had something she'd like to share with the board or the people at home?
Sure. So I just learned that my husband's old unit that he retired from, the 745th EOD out of Grayling, has been deployed to the Middle East. So I would like to have just a moment of prayer for their safety. Dear Heavenly Father, please watch over our men and women who sign up to serve and for their families who also serve in a different way. I pray that you would make the return safe, make their mission safe. And I pray blessings on everyone who serves in our military in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. Move on with the roll call, Mr. Gaddman.
McAllister?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Walter?
Here.
Spence?
Here.
Hensel?
I'm here.
Nelson?
Here.
Andrews?
Here.
Morris?
Here.
Seifert?
Here.
Great. Approval of the minutes.
Move to approve as presented.
All right, motion by Hensel. Second?
Second.
McAllister, any discussion, questions?
Just a question, why, maybe I missed the cadence of this, but we did have a study session and wondering why there are any, are there not minutes to look at from that for last week? Or?
Good question.
There's nothing, it just feels like we jumped a few weeks here, a couple of weeks.
We've had some staff with deaths in the family. It might have set some things back.
And I just, I believe we're waiting for something to come back from Matt, so.
Well, can adminis, it's minutes from a meeting.
Well, I understand that, but.
I can look and just see if they're, I believe they're posted, but I don't know if they're attached. Bear with me just a moment.
So it'd been from last week. We can catch up to it for next meeting. But I agree with you, Commissioner Walter, they're missing.
The minutes are complete and.
All right, we'll just see it at our.
They're just not attached to this agenda.
Okay, so just to be clear, we're not approving that. We'll just see those at our next meeting?
I'll make sure of that. Thank you, thank you for catching that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. Opposed? Fantastic. First public comment.
Skip over the approval of the minutes from the February 19th meeting.
It's 3A, approval 3A, we just did it.
No, I thought we approved the agenda.
Mm-mm, we haven't done first public comment yet.
We haven't gotten to agenda yet.
Sorry.
You ready for my spiel?
I am ready for your spiel, sir.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following Board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the Board may state his or her name and township or district. Providing a specific address is not recommended. Persons may address the Board on matters or issues which are relevant and germane to county government as determined by the Chair. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The Chair shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The Chair may, at his or her discretion, allow an additional opportunity or time to speak if determined germane and necessary to the discussion. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment may be received during the meeting when a specific agenda topic is scheduled for discussion by the Board. Prior to the first public comment, the Chair will indicate the topics on the agenda for which comment will be accepted. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the Clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the Board until called upon by the Chair. The Board shall not comment or respond to a person who is addressing the Board. Silence or non-response from the Board should not be interpreted as disinterest or disagreement by the Board. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Thank you, Mr. Gaddman. For the sake of brevity, if you want you to speak in first public comment, just feel free to line up behind the podium and take your turn. Anyone?
Justin Reed, 63, Cottage, well, Traverse City resident. So I have in front of me something that's very disturbing. And this is with the January, well, not January, but the February 20th Norlick Community Health Meeting. Now, quite, I understand if you go into closed session, you cannot go ahead and talk about that specific item. However, in the, in the Open Meetings Act, it says, "A 23 roll call vote of members elected or appointed and serving is required to call a closed session, except for a closed session permitted only section AA, dah 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 dah." "The roll call vote and the purpose or purposes for calling closed session shall be entered into the minutes," meaning at which the vote is taking. I look at the minutes and the only thing that I see in the minutes for closed session is just a vote. No kind of reasoning why you went into a closed session first and second time, which is kind of, I don't know, maybe it might be, you know, a rogue portion of the, of the Norlick Community Health Board of Directors. I mean, you know, we've had that happen in the past. And so when we're talking about ethics and everything from, from your, from the Board of Directors, from the County Board last Wednesday, is, it's kind of funny on how, you know, the whole entire Norlick Community Health got brought up. And I kinda, I'm disdain, I'm very, 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 very troubled by that statement. I don't quite understand, you know, I, I kinda feel like the previous Board of Commissioners went ahead and was unhappy and unsatisfied about it. And I had somebody ask me, a community member asked me, "Oh, hey, what do you think on the Board of Directors?" You know, I was very keen on, on signing up for it. And I told him this, is if you're putting on the, on the Norlick Community Health Board of Directors or any kind of Board of Directors, is that loyalty, does that lie with the, with the county commission or the program it serves? Because if it, if it is the county, you know, county's loyalty, then how can you vote for something that people use in the public? I get, I kinda, I, I, you know, I don't know. I don't know. I did, I did rant to them about how, you know, I'm just, it's, it's, it's so incomparable that I can't even, words don't describe it at all from what I'm saying. Is to go ahead and, I don't know, it's just to me, so thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments for first public comment? Seeing none, we're moving right along. So we're going to move to the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
Mr. Hensel?
Support.
Mr. Nelson supports. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Excellent, thank you, everyone. Consent calendar. Mr. Gaddman.
Purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one Commission motion without discussion. Any member of the Commission's staff or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted to receive and file or approve is approved by a single Commission action adopting the consent calendar. All information identified on the consent calendar can be viewed in its entirety on the county's website. Items to receive: Item A, ARPA status report. Item A2, the Traverse Area District Library, January 2025 meeting minutes. Item A3, the Northwest Regional Airport Authority, January 2025 meeting minutes. Item A4, the letter from the Rock Creek Homes. Items for approval: Item B1, the replacement of Howe area dehumidifiers. Item B2, ARPA funding reimbursement requests. Item B3, a vehicle replacement purchase. Item B4, Highland software on-base renewal. Item B5, October through December 2024 claims approval. Item B6, the July through September 2024 claims approval.
All right, okay, anyone want to remove anything?
Uh, B1, please.
Okay. Oh, Commissioner Nelson?
A4.
Four? Anyone else? All right, I'll take a motion to approve if those are moved.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Andrews, support by Hensel. Is this a roll call?
Former Chair.
Yes, it is, sir.
All right. Mr. Gaddman, a roll call vote, if you please?
Certainly. Flynn?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Hensel?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to 7A, Mr. Watkins? Thanks for being here.
Good morning. Couple of meetings that I attended here in the last month was the Acme Township meeting and the Long Lake Township meeting. Also attended a class. I did a HMA paving operations class. It was a three-day-long class and normally not a class that you'd probably take at a manager's level. But I'm really trying to learn as much as I can about asphalt and paving operations and trying to find some ways that we can save some money and find some different options. This, you know, a million dollars a mile is really putting us in a bind for how much we need to get done. So we're starting to take some classes and try to get some certifications in asphalt. So it's been pretty interesting and there's a lot more to it than I realized.
Any questions for Mr. Watkins?
I think, I don't think he's done.
Oh, are you? Sorry, I hear you nodding.
Sorry.
That big dramatic pause.
Yeah.
Guy's got to breathe.
Yeah. Spinning it all out there. Obviously, we're kind of honored to bend here with weather. Guys were pushing really hard with, you know, all the snow that we'd received. Still going out some mornings, getting some ice issues and different things like that. But it was a much-needed break. That was a really long stretch for the guys. Not only that, the equipment, the trucks start to really take a, you know, a hurting after being pushed that far. Some of them, trucks are going 24 hours a day with day crews and night crews sharing trucks. So a little break in the weather, we were actually able to get those trucks back good shape, ready for the next round. Hopefully, there's not too many more rounds left here. Looking forward to moving into summer operations. And moving into summer operations, that's what we're starting to do right now. It's a little downtime. We have the crews out cutting trees. And what we're doing is we're actually laying out, and we did the project list. Last time I was in here, I showed you that. We're also starting to do a project list for what the, you know, crews are going to do. We're trying to get in front of them for the winter. Get out, get those trees cut, get that ready. So when we go out and hit spring, we can actually do these projects. The projects that we're looking at doing is high ridging, ditching, things that we can do internally, again, looking for ways to save money on overall projects. With that being said, the shop, that's what they're pushing hard on right now is we're trying to get ready for that. We're getting our mower tractors out, we're getting our trailers, we're getting everything prepped. So we're getting ready for spring. And then last but not least, frost laws. Those went on this week. So it was kind of interesting. It was like almost the entire state of Michigan went on on Monday, kind of an agreement. There was huge thing going around. I think there was probably over 70 managers emailing back and forth, trying to decide when to do it. And we just put those on. Unfortunately, not really sure when they're going to come off. Still seeing some cold weather come in and out, some warm, some rain. So hopefully, we can take those off as soon as possible, so we can get everybody back to work. That's all I had.
Commissioner Hensel?
Thanks for your report. I have talked to you for a few years about Hammond Road between Town Line and Three Mile. I don't see it on the project list. Am I missing it?
Uh, 26, that'll be a.
Okay, that's going to be another year?
Yep, that'll be a 2026 project.
Okay, and then I do see the Three Mile Road project, which is long overdue. Thank you for getting to that. When do we expect to see some action there on the Three Mile Road?
Yeah, right now, we've been talking. We actually have our kickoff meeting here. I invited Greg Byrd to that meeting, so we can start to talk about that. And we got some concerns there with Metro Station 1 being right there, making sure they can get in and out. And the talk right now is we're thinking that we should probably wait until after school's out, because there's so many schools in the area and such a congested area, that we'd probably let school get out and then look at certain of the projects sometime after that.
Thank you.
I'll just come back this way. Commissioner Spence?
Good morning, thank you for the update. I wanted to know if you are going to be attending the County Road Association Conference coming up March 25th through the 27th in Lansing?
Probably not going to be able to make this one.
There's a, like a day-long grant writing for County Road Commission's breakout session. Are any of the Commissioners going to be attending that?
Yes, I believe Joe Underwood is planning on attending that.
Great, okay, hopefully, he'll be able to report back about that grant writing process breakout session.
Yeah, definitely.
Because I'd like to know more about that. Thanks.
Yes, hi. So greetings from Long Lake Township. Our residents along the Gray Road and Cedar Run corridor were very much appreciative of the traffic signals and they miss them already. As I was traveling this morning, it has reverted back to the Indy 500. And so it's still our hope that we are able to permanently install a traffic signal on that corridor. But on the positive side, the, the guardrail still remains unscathed. I think we should put a sign up that says we have had this many days since.
Yeah, we gotta be pushing a record here.
Right, that's all.
Awesome, thank you. Anyone else else call? I'll get back to you, Commissioner Nelson, going to Chris Andrews.
Couple of quick questions on Peninsula Township Projects Bluff Road fix. Any update on that? And then did the DNR boat launch, did DNR submit a road access application yet for East Shore Road?
We have not seen anything as far as a driveway permit for the boat launch. I heard they did officially submit the bid to go out, but then I also heard that might have possibly, I don't know this for sure, I've just been hearing some things, they might be pulling that bid back. So that was the last update I had heard.
They did indicate that they'd be working with the Township to go through the zoning process on that, so that might impact their bidding. But they, they also indicated that they wanted to move it forward for informational purposes to get that bid information. So I didn't know if that had crossed your, your door, your email box yet. How about the Bluff Road fix?
Yeah, Bluff Road's still a stadium. I think we were about $3 million for that project. We recently looked at an opportunity, a landowner talked to us about giving them some land if we could move the road over a little bit and if that would save any. And it only saved about $70,000 unfortunately, so it's still a pretty costly project.
And do you know if there's any, any grant funding in the works that might assist with that, offset that cost?
Not that I'm aware of.
Commissioner, is that it, TJ?
Yep.
Commissioner Nelson?
I have two things. One is kind of specific, but it was either here at one of the Township meetings, you talked about the new blades that were supposed to last longer on the plows that you want to, that we were putting on this year. How did that pan out? You sure had a, you had a test?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, the carbide blades versus steel blades last much, much longer. But we definitely went through more blades this year than we had in the last several years. So we did go through more blades than we expected, but we plan for that. Try to always have a good surplus in there. I've heard several road commissions around the area. I think I saw some news articles that they've, they've ran out of salt, they've ran out of sand, they're running out of blades. We're still in really good shape this year, so.
But it was a positive, the blades were?
It was, it's positive, definitely. I think it helped extend us.
Okay. The other, the other thing I had is, Mr. Chair, I don't believe we have yet appointed anybody from the VOC to go to the meetings for the Road Commission. Are we waiting to do that or is that?
I really, actually haven't even really thought about that, but we can look into that for sure.
Think we should.
I mean, anybody can go to those meetings, right?
Anybody can go to the meetings that they want. I was going to the meetings for over a year before I was actually the official liaison, so.
But historically, we've had a board appointment to the Road Commission?
I don't know.
On and off.
Last year.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have it, I think.
I don't disagree with that, Commissioner Nelson. Good planning on the salt and the carbide blades, by the way. I mean, I drive fairly far to Traverse City early in the morning. Guys are doing a pretty good job. I'm very happy with that. I got a couple of questions, but I'll wait. Anybody else? How's things going in Paradise Township in the new building?
Great. It's working out really good. Very happy with the building.
Beautiful, I'm glad to hear that. It's a beautiful building. Good job on that as well. Um, I have just a, you probably can't answer this off the top of your head and that's okay. I was just curious as, between, oh my gosh, I can't even remember the name of the road, but Bay, Bayou, Bayous Hill there, that stretch of road of Garfield between essentially River Road and Three Mile was paved, or Slocom Road, number of years ago? How many years ago was that, you know? Top of your head?
Oh, the paving, I'm not sure. I know we chip sealed that.
Maybe it was the chip sealing. Yeah, the paving was probably, that was a while ago. That answers that question. I had some questions about that. It's like, it looked like it'd just been recently chip sealed. While, and while I got here. So there used to be a right turn lane there and they didn't, when they painted it last year, they painted out the right turn lane from Garfield down to Three Mile. Was that an oversight on their part?
I'm not sure, but I can look into that.
Because we did, because, I'm sorry, not we. Road Commission did pave that and I wonder what the change was.
Perfect, got a note on that and I'll look into that because we are getting ready to go out for painting, so.
Sweet.
We did award the bid for a long line painting already this year.
I see you raising your hand.
Just when you're done, I'd like to.
I'm done, thank you. Go ahead, Nate.
So I'd like to highlight something that is not typically highlighted. Dan didn't bring it up, but we had a, we have a gentleman who lives in Paradise Township by the name of Gary Godzabuski. Gary has a unique privilege of living on a stretch of road that is continuously hazardous throughout the winter. He has a unique slope where during a sunny day, the snow melts and then drips down into his yard across Voice Road. And when it freezes, it's an ice rink. And he knows when there's going to be accidents. So he reached out to the sheriff, Dan and I, and we met with him, talked about solutions surrounding that specific environment. Because once there is an accident there, there's multiple accidents there. And there have been at least one or two fatalities in that location. And it's just, it's a, it's not engineering, it's just the curvature of the road, the slope of the road, all of it. So Gary has had this over the years, so he is now having kind of a direct flag with dispatch. In the event that Gary or the Godzabuski's call and say, "This event is occurring," the Road Commission can actually go lay salt on that area more quickly, so. And he was not complaining about response time. In fact, he was actually very positive with both the sheriff and Dan about the way the county has been responding. But it was kind of a unique situation and it sounds like we've got a, a way for him to communicate with dispatch directly in the event that it occurs again.
Fantastic. Any more questions or comments for Mr. Watkins? Thank you very much for being here today, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to 7B, public hearing. Nate, I'm going to let you tee this up, if you would.
So the Paradise Township has changed the way that they want to allow, they now want to allow ORVs to travel from down Garfield Road from Mayfield Trail in Paradise Township, which Mayfield Trail goes to the east, north of Mayfield, and it goes to the west just as you enter into Mayfield. And the, previously, ORVs have not been allowed to travel south of that intersection. So now the Paradise Township has approved an ordinance to allow ORV traffic adjacent to the roadway to the village limits, the village of Kingsley limits. So we had to have a 45-day posting of that ordinance and that posting time has elapsed. It's been in the Record Eagle since early January. And we now need to have a public hearing on the ordinance for approval. Mr. Laco, the supervisor of Paradise Township, was going to be here to present. He had some recent medical issues and was not able to attend.
He did send me an email to, of his comments, so I'll preface it with this. This is Mr. Laco, who's the Paradise Township supervisor. Paradise Township has discussed at several different board meetings on how to best to enforce illegal ORV traffic on Garfield Road between East Blair Town Hall Road and Mayfield Road. This stretch of Garfield is about a half mile in length and to avoid breaking the law, 13-mile loop is required that crosses 113 twice. The Paradise Township Board formally requests Grand Traverse County no longer prohibit ORV traffic on Garfield Road, Garfield Road, south of Mayfield Road. This new legal route will allow ORV enthusiasts easier access to trails and patronize our local establishments. Uh, I would like to add to that, that this trail that they're talking about has been there since I've been alive. When I was a kid, it was snowmobiles, it was horses, it was dirt bikes, and it's just continued to remain there, with their, being used as a trail, whether it was legal or illegal. And I believe, and the sheriff can correct me if I'm wrong, because I know he's here, that this will allow Sheriff's Office to put more tools on their tool belt to enforce illegal activities in that stretch of road. So I've never done a public hearing before in this chair, in this seat, so what do we do next?
Do you just open up for public comment and take comment as it comes?
Fantastic. Anyone that care to, public comment, by all means, please. Make sure you state your name and your township.
Can you date, note the date and time of the public hearing opening?
I also believe the public commenter needs to express opposition or some type of preference for the ordinance.
Sounds good, so let's say the public hearing will start now, 9:26, 35, 2025.
Charles Williams, I'm Paradise Township. I'm also with the Northwest ORV Association. Not only do we have rides and such, but we also groom the ORV trails locally. We promote safe riding, we do all the signage, we do all the grooming for the ORV trails that's authorized by the DNR. I've been to five of the homes on that stretch that we're discussing. I have names and signatures and addresses of those five homes that are in favor of having this go through. As part of the association, we try to promote safe riding and we try to help correct people that are going outside the limits of what they shouldn't be doing. And to get from one ORV trail to the next, there's no other way to get, but go down that stretch of road. I mean, it's just not feasible. Working with the DNR, the DNR eventually plans on putting a staging area over by the fairgrounds area somewhere so that snowmobiles or, and enthusiasts for ORVs and motorcycles and such can unload and leave their vehicles there and enjoy the trail system from there and connect it all the way up, ride all the way up to the north, as far as you want to go. I believe it's going to help promote businesses. We all need gas, we all need snacks and drinks and food. And I think by promoting this, it's going to help the local businesses as well. I don't know if anybody doesn't go out on an ORV or a snowmobile that says, "Hey, I'd like to have a hot lunch," including myself. So I'm all in favor for it. If you'd like to have a copy of this, I can give this here, if you like, but it's available if you need it.
Sorry, what? Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? All right, it's a closed public comment, 9:28. I'm going to add a little thing to that for those of you that probably aren't familiar with the area where they're talking about, is it go, excuse me, it goes from the, the wet, the western border of the Brown Bridge Quiet Area. There's a road that goes through there and trails. And this half-mile stretch you're talking about will connect you to Blair Town Hall Road, which would take you through Hoosier Valley, which is full of state land and trails. So to give you perspective in your mind. So, comments, Commissioner Nelson?
I just had a question, since we have the sheriff here.
I just had a question. Since we have the sheriff here, did you have any comment from a law enforcement perspective?
No. I would merely add that it, what the chair has stated is correct, that that historically has been utilized. And when I was contacted about this, I merely made it clear that the way the ordinance is written is it is in violation and if we are faced to deal with it, we will, and it will range from education to citing. So, our office is, is neutral on it as far as if Paradise Township wants to extend it, fine, or amend it, we're, we're good with that. We're going to enforce when necessary the ordinance as it is written. What I will add, um, I believe we now have three ORV rental businesses in Grand Traverse County. That being said, I'm segueing into something here. Um, we don't have an ORV patrol. And we used to. That was discontinued, I believe, in 2012 or 13. And, um, it was mainly grant funded. ORV has taken over, ORV traffic has taken over as the predominant recreational vehicle traffic, surpassing snowmobiles, mainly because of our weather. So I will be coming to you in the very near future, asking that you allow us to use some of the money that was budgeted and did not get expended from our vehicle purchases to purchase an ORV to patrol the thousands of miles of County Two Trax and trails that we have in Grand Traverse County. Because right now, the only enforcement is the DNR. And the DNR predominantly enforces the designated trails. Well, that is not where the majority of the traffic, myself as an ORV traveler, and I think we could get support for this, saying that, that County Two Trax are used a lot. And if we lock ourselves in to grant money to purchase this vehicle, we are locking ourself in to only patrolling designated ORV trails with that vehicle. We would be limiting ourself. I don't want to do that. I want to be able to patrol where the ORVs are traveling. So we will be in front of you in the very near future, requesting that we use some of those non-expended funds that were budgeted to purchase that vehicle, outfit it and so forth. Um, I, I'm a huge supporter of ORV traffic when done correctly. I think it, it's a great way for families to get out and enjoy the outdoors. And, you know, as far as it as a recreational sport, I highly support it. The ordinance, we're neutral on, but if you're going to, if you're going to allow that traffic, you need to address the ordinance. Any other questions for me on that?
Can you, what is the, is DNR the primary respondent if there's an issue on an ORV on a designated trail? Or what is the jurisdictional overlap between?
No, we ultimately have to get there. And so without an ORV, that means we either go with fire department, DNR if they have a quad available, or we try and take one of our four-wheel-drive vehicles to get there. All, I believe, all ORV crashes, whether on private property or public, I believe, have to be reported to law enforcement. The vast majority, I don't believe, get reported. But we are ultimately responsible for that. And we have to report those crashes to the DNR.
And just to clarify, if we were to pursue grant funding to, to purchase a veal, a vehicle, a condition of grant funding is that the vehicle can only be used on designated trails?
Correct. We have an old 125 motorcycle, the under shift, the under shift. The administrator could help me with this. It, I don't even think it runs anymore. It was purchased with grant money from the DNR. It was used to patrol designated ORV trails. It's really impractical because if we run into a situation where we have to take enforcement action, you have to call an officer off the road to transport. You have to get that individual to a location where we can transport. My recommendation moving forward would be we get a side-by-side of some sort so that we can do that transporting. But yes, to answer your question and speaking with the lieutenant from the DNR, it has been explained to me that if there is grant money available and if you utilize that, you are locking yourself in to basically patrolling designated ORV trails with that vehicle.
So why wouldn't we designate more trails as ORV trails? I mean, that's what we're doing now, right?
That's a DNR question. I.
Well, I mean, it sounds like we're the ones who designate the trails.
No, no, these are, what?
Oh, you're talking about DNR trails.
Is, is different. That allows you to operate an, an ORV on the rightmost portion of, in a road that is open to ORV traffic at a maximum of 25 miles an hour. And we, as the sheriff's office, are the enforcing body on that. The DNR is not.
Any more questions for the sheriff or comments? Looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Nelson, supported by Commissioner Hinchell. This will be a roll call vote. Sam?
Walter?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Hinchell?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes.
Beg your pardon.
There. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your input, Sheriff. Mr. Williams, thank you. All right. So I think we're going to items removed from the consent counter, starting with A4.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to highlight that the, uh, Grand Traverse County Building Codes Office was called out in a letter from Rock Creek Homes. Uh, it was very complimentary. As we all know, the building codes department was hit significantly after our cyber attack and they worked very, very hard to recover. And during that time, this is a company that said they built, I think it was 35 homes the last year. And, uh, they talked about how the building codes office stepped up, responded, was, always had a positive attitude and they were able to get answers for them. So I just think that we ought to highlight Bruce from I and Robert Surtan for their, their team and what they did. And, um, I'm sure that, like all departments, they get the complaint letters and, uh, they're being called out here in a really tough time for stepping it up. So hats off to those folks.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to add, we get very relatively, we get complaints, but relatively few complaints from project developers or builders. But, um, when we got this letter, uh, Donna, I'm sorry, Ms. Kinsey and I, our HR director, went down to the construction code office and when they announced that the administrator and the HR director was here to see Bruce, his eyes were big as saucers. Which tells me we shouldn't do that. We should do it more, so it's not suspicious. But it was good to have that. And all of his guys were there to, uh, thank and appreciate them for their business. So it was, it was a nice, nice letter and a nice, uh, nice delivery.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Nelson. And your work, Mr. Elger. Go ahead, Commissioner Hinchell.
I just want to agree. It's great to hear positive. We hear plenty of negative, you know, across everything we do. With that, I will move to receive and file the letter from Rock Creek Homes.
Support.
All right. We have a motion to receive, file and both support, Commissioner Hinchell and Commissioner Nelson respectively. This is a roll call too, isn't it, former chair? Sweet. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you very much. On to B1.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Um, I appreciate that this project has been on the capital improvement, uh, plan list for at least a couple of years. Uh, and it looks like it's going to move forward. Can you give us outline what you think? Is there going to be an interruption in the use of the facility and for how long and how does that scheduling work?
Okay.
And then my second question is, uh, congratulations on being below budget. And, and then to administration, how does that work? At what point? I don't see that we have a backup plan list for projects. Um, does it go back into the pot for overages or how do we account for that? Is there a mid-year check-in point or how are we going to accommodate that? So?
Okay. So there were, thank you. Uh, John Chase, Director of Parks and Facilities for Grand Traverse County. Uh, there were a couple of things in there, so I'll try and make sure I address each of those. I may have forgotten one of them, so just remind me of that. Um, the first is regarding the timing for that. Uh, so we've let the contractor know that the arena will be available beginning mid-March and the project has to be complete by July 15. That gives us enough, uh, backup time to be able to get ice in there afterwards. And, um, we will work with them to make sure there's no interruption to any activity that's occurring in the arena. Uh, they, these two dehumidifying, dehumidification units, they are in the ceiling and they're off on either end. So they won't interrupt anything that's going on in the center. So for example, um, mid-week we have Traverse City Roller Derby in there. Um, we could actually be continuing to do that work at the same time Roller Derby is, is occupying the space because they occupy the middle. They don't occupy the outside. So we'll make sure that there's no interruption to any of the rentals or any of the other activity, uh, that is going on in there.
Twilight skate. My daughter will need to know. Is that going to continue?
It will continue, yes. So we've let them know that it is an active arena, active rental space, and that we want to make sure we are not interrupting any of the active rentals. So, uh, the biggest thing will be having to bring in lifts and basically they're up in the ceiling. So we'll bring in lifts, slide the two units out, slide the two in, and then the, the rest of it is ancillary work in terms of piping and stuff. It's actually a simple project.
Sadly, tomorrow is the last day of open skate anyway, right, for the season?
Yes. Uh, tomorrow's the last day of open skate. So, uh, center ice will be out, actually their last day is tomorrow, and they'll start taking the boards and the ice out on Friday. And then we have the boat show that comes in. So 12 o'clock on Wednesday, uh, ice is scheduled to be out 12:01. The boat show starts moving in and I'm willing to bet that Andrew, if he's listening, he'll be knocking on our door at 11:30. Ask him to get in. So, um, you had a second question about the?
Uh, no, I, I, I just asked, um, administration, when we have under, uh, projects like this that are under budget, which I think we all appreciate, and especially in this time of inflation and, uh, increasing costs, what, um, how can we accommodate other projects getting added into the capital improvement plan since it looked like we had a finite number that exactly matched the budget? So, um, just a process question.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Andrews. Uh, so we, the board approved a number. They, they approved a number and specific projects for 2025. So when I would contemplate that in the event that something like this occurs over and over again with specific projects, some of those projects are going to be, uh, more expensive than anticipated. But as we save funds in this CIP fund, my contemplated goal would be in the end of, towards the end of the year, if we have additional dollars remaining, we have some of those capital improvement items that were not approved. We could come back to this board and say, now we have excess funds. Can we do this project, this project, or this project? Regardless, they will roll over into 2026 unless this board takes action otherwise. Do you have a preference?
I mean, my understanding is that when they roll over, we have to reapprove them in the new project. Like the, for example, the jail cameras last year were approved in '24 and we reapproved them in '25.
That's correct.
But that's different than rolling over into the CIP, right? Are you talking in general, rolling over or keeping it in the CIP?
Well, Dean can share a historical perspective, but we have, over the last several years, we've rolled those funds forward. But my, like, my guess is, is that in the event that we get into just the end of the year of '25, if there are excess funds in the CIP, this board can move those funds elsewhere.
That, that's the beauty of fund accounting. I mean, whatever we're doing with, uh, the CIP isn't a fund all by itself. Uh, you do have the projects that were included, uh, in the budget for 2025 as there are savings or, uh, additional funds that may become available. They're always subject to budget use amendment or appropriation elsewhere. Uh, but we could add projects that come in over budget as well. So it's very fluid.
Of course, our goal is always to be under, but there are some situations where we can't control that. So we are tracking the CIP projects through a SharePoint site that we all have access to and we can input information in, into that site. John is noting what, what we budgeted, what the projected cost was, I should say, what we budgeted and the actual cost and completion. So as we get through the CIP list, we actually have these items being checked off. So we can provide a report to the board what exactly we did and what it cost.
Go ahead.
And what we didn't get to. Like you saw last year, there were some things that we just didn't get to.
Commissioner Elger, any more questions for Mr. Chase? Comments? Thank you very much.
Motion to approve the contract as presented?
Second.
Sweet. Motion by Andrew, second by Flynn. What? Oh, because it's money?
Yeah.
Roll, roll call vote, please. Mr. Giedman?
Spence?
Yes.
Hinchell?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Move on to nine A. Sheriff, you're up.
Good morning. Mike Shea, Grand Traverse County Sheriff. You have in your packet a, um, request to amend our current healthcare provider contract with the jail with ACH. Uh, basically to go from 152 hours a week of nursing coverage to 208 or 24/7 coverage. Uh, you have a list in there of some of the noted, uh, benefits of doing that, most of which are fairly logical. Um, you know, we can have a medical event at any given time in the jail and shy of having a medical professional onsite, we rely on our correction staff to deal with that accordingly and make that decision whether or not we have to, uh, call for a transport or transport that individual to Munson for off-site care. The additional cost is an annual cost of 302,103 total. Uh, but we do take a reduction in nursing hour, uh, cost per hour from 115 down to 112. By making this move, this is something we have been looking at and wanting for quite some time. There was a delay this year in actually approaching you on this request because of some medical billing questions and concerns that we have worked through. And we are now here asking for your support. This is budgeted. It is under budget from what we requested and were approved on. Um, I have represented our HSA from ACH Kerry is here. I have the jail administrator is here. I'm here. The undersheriff's here. The lieutenant's here. Ask away.
Sweet. Well, we're going to start at Commissioner Flynn's end because I'm sure Commissioner Andrews has got 10 questions.
Pass right on. In the, pass it on. I'll come back to it.
Okay. Commissioner Nelson?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Hinchell?
Uh, Mr. Sheriff, thank you for your presentation and the information provided. I would like to move to approve as requested.
Support.
Fantastic. Move by Hinchell, support by Nelson. Discussion, questions? I'm going to come right down. I'm going to guess that look. It means no, Mr. McAllister?
I'm good.
Mr. McAllister. Commissioner Spence?
No.
Commissioner Morris?
I'm good.
Commissioner Walter?
Yeah, thanks. Have we ever had 24/7? Are we, are we changing back to that? We never have had. It's always been kind of 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM for a long time anyway?
We've never had it since I've been here. I don't know if the administrator back in the day can recall. I will tell you, and I think it was provided in your packet, if not, I will share with you. I had the undersheriff reach out on our listserv to, um, other correctional facilities equal to or greater than ours. And I believe all but one responded that they have 24/7 nursing coverage.
And do you anticipate that this will cut down on, um, staff kind of after that 10:00 PM cutoff, sending people to the hospital or, um, possibly? Are you hoping that reduces that need?
Yeah, we're definitely hoping that it will help reduce some of our off-site, um, transports because we'll have somebody onsite that can actually recognize, oh, this isn't life-threatening and deal with it accordingly.
And ACH feels good about their staffing situation that they?
Barry, you want to address that?
I, all I hear about is nursing shortage. So I'm just wondering.
The previous question that you asked, I do think that it would reduce the amount of off-site visits. Our provider would be more comfortable with us calling and saying this is what's going on and her feeling more comfortable with us keeping them there onsite and assessing compared to an officer calling. She would more than likely just say, send them. Um, yeah, we are already fully prepared to start today if we could 24/7 nursing. I have it fully staffed. And since I have been part of ACH since, uh, March of '23, uh, we've not had any, uh, holes in our schedule. So they've not been without nursing when scheduled.
Can you introduce yourself to everybody?
Oh, sorry. I'm Carrie Patrick, the Health Service Administrator.
Thank you, Carrie. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Andrews?
Um, as Sheriff Shea knows, I did send an email, uh, ahead of time and asked a lot of questions that I had to save, um, some of the, uh, questions that you apparently anticipated I would have today. Um, I am concerned, uh, about our overall spend on healthcare in the jail. That number has gone, as I'm sure the rest of the commission is aware, from 1.4 million to 2.2 million in one year from 2024 to 2025. That is a huge increase in spending. Um, it, it boggles my, um, my, my pea brain to keep up with these numbers. Uh, and we've got a, and it's not just nurse, 24-hour nursing care. It's also, um, off-site transport and medical, um, diagnostics and medical assisted treatment and many other, uh, items that are either falling out from prior years or being added as necessities coming forward. So, um, I do have concerns that we should be looking holistically at a, a process. holistically at a process. 1.4 million dollars for nursing care in the jail is a lot of nurses, a lot of care, especially when we're paying for those services to come from a corporation, as I understand it, from Tennessee. I'm not sure. I assume the nurses are local, but I just want to go on the record and say that this is not a sustainable level trend that we're on, as I'm sure the sheriff is aware, and is going to need further understanding how we can not keep on this trend. So, thank you. There's no question that 24-hour-a-day care seems like a threshold, a necessity, and I appreciate that this is coming forward to us.
I'm going to echo some of Commissioner Andrews' comments. I don't believe it's a sustainable, but it is a necessary thing, and here we are today, looking forward to that. We'll have to address some of those increases in costs of the taxpayers' dollar come the end of this year. You stated in here that additional $298,679 is already accounted for in your 2025 budget. Are you moving that from one place to another?
No.
It's budgeted.
No, we don't have to move it.
Oh, you anticipated it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fantastic. All right. Any more questions or comments? Commissioner Flynn? Commissioner Walter?
Yeah, I would love to see, would love for you, maybe both of you, to come back later this year, give us an update on how the shift is working and what those numbers are looking like. You know, are we saving money in other areas because we're, we have the 24-hour care? I think it's a good idea, too, but, and maybe we won't have enough information later this year to understand that, but I would love to hear an update on how that's going related to Commissioner Andrews' trend concern. So that would be great if we could see you back like third quarter for an update on this.
100% in agreement.
Sorry. I was just going to say, I think we're coming up on the end of a three-year contract, and so I anticipate you would be going out to bid on that, and I'd be interested to know what you, you know, if you think there's an opportunity for cost savings to be had going forward, or if you think this is just the natural trend that we're on.
Commissioner Nelson?
I have no way of really forecasting who. Yes, we will be going out for RFPs probably around June. This current contract, which is the end of a three-year contract, expires at the end of this year. We are hopeful ACH will bid on this. We are hopeful there will be other entities that will have interest and bid on it. That being said, I can tell you the last time we went out for RFPs, it's very limited. And we are exploring other options internally as well as externally. But again, it all boils down to when we put the RFP out, who's interested in bidding, and what are the numbers going to look like? It is, I think, fair to say nationally, the cost of inmate healthcare is going up. There's no question about it. But are we experiencing an accelerated rate? Seems high to me, but there is some degree that there is, it's a cost of doing business. But we have to be frugal with it. I get that. And I am all about looking at it and seeing ways that we can hopefully save money. Hopefully, this is one way. It looks like it's costing us money, but in the long run, hopefully, it will save us money.
Commissioner Nelson?
I just want to comment that this was submitted by Randy Fules, Sheriff. So, Mr. Sheriff?
We share the title.
Just don't turn your back on him.
So if I may comment on that, if I may comment on that, when we submitted this through the platform that we are required to submit it, we are unable to submit it under the current jail administrator because he's not in there. So we observed some things or identified some things that are being corrected. But I appreciate that.
I just concerned for you. I'm not going to comment on that.
I'll take it.
So, last call? We have a motion on the table. Mr. Giedman, a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes. Commissioner Kerry, thank you very much. Thank you, Sheriff, and everyone.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
All right, let's move along to unfinished business. Anyone? That's awesome. Anybody want to add anything to new business, even though there's nothing there? All right, so let's go to Commissioner Department Reports. Start with you, Mr. Alger.
Okay. We had a leadership meeting yesterday for the Grand Traverse Center of Mental Wellness, and we had first numbers come out. And this will be a reporting mechanism. We're trying to determine how best to report information and what information to the Board of Commissioners as well as the community. But since opening, they've had 76 clients, and they actually think that's more like 90, because some of these interactions are less formal than somebody coming into the center. But they've had 76 come in. Of the 76, 54 were in office. 53 of those were adults. 59 were resolved. And what they say is resolved is whatever conflict they were experiencing when they came into the center, they were sufficiently addressed to allow that individual to leave the center. 50 of them were Medicaid eligible, so the Medicaid was able to pay for that service. That meant 26 were not. Those are private payers. So right now, currently, CMH is not set up to be able to take private insurance. So Munson and CMH are trying to determine the partnership. How can Munson actually receive the payment for the private payers? And they're confident that they are there and that they'll, they'll get there. Big news is that they have received preliminary approval for their youth CRU. There are ties attached to that, of course. They've got to do some different things to make sure there's no contact between adults or juveniles, and there's some, you know, facility issues that they've got to take care of in terms of topography. They have to have a back door. They can't, if you're familiar with where the center is, it's on an elevated hill, so they've got to do some work there. But the good news is they have tentative approval, and they're moving forward with that. So that's good news. Secondly, yesterday, John Chase and I started the public information campaign about our walking track at the Civic Center. As you know, that's going to begin in March, and the removal of the bridge is going to occur near spring break. So we're going to start pushing information out about the Civic Center's walking path, and this is going to be closed for some time. They're going to start first with the running track or the earthen track that will lie adjacent to, in most instances, adjacent to the track. And then they'll put the asphalt track back in, and the bridge will go back in sometime in June, and we'll have substantial completion, mid-June complete completion in July.
I have a question for that. How's that going to affect the traffic on that?
On the track?
On the road, coming off of Garfield.
Nothing off of Garfield, but with part of the, so this was a Spark grant, if you recall. We got a million-dollar Spark grant to do this project, and it's not only the track, but it's also an improvement where the amphitheater is. They're going to actually pave that parking lot so that it's not just a dirt pit, and they're also going to do some curb cutting on the Titus Street side that will allow more traffic or the better flow of traffic. With Garfield Avenue and the West Civic Center Drive, that will not be impacted.
So I don't know if, did John leave?
He did.
I'll reach out. So may or may not know that we're Oak Park School.
Microphone.
Thank you. Sorry. Taking a break today?
What's up with that?
You may not know this, but part of the Northwest Ed, school services take place at Oak Park on the backside there, and there's about 50 buses a day. They come up that side road, they park, they unload and upload. Students drive through Civic Center, and they come out Titus Avenue. That's three times a day. So any closure of either end will be very problematic for the flow of that.
We will reach out to Dr. Segleric then and make sure that we have an understanding of his bus schedule. Because I don't, I don't know that West Civic Center Drive is going to be closed, but stands to reason that when the crane removes the bridge, there's going to be disruption.
Yeah, you're not driving underneath the crane. That's not happening. And the same thing with the entrance and exit off of Titus Road. That's where the buses, they come up from Garfield, they go through, and they leave out on the Titus Road or out to 8th Street.
And is there a reason they can't use the parking lot? Is it a turning radius?
Well, for one, there's no room for, it's a one-way in, and there is no room for two buses to be going through that opening where the...
I'll talk to, I'll talk to Nick about...
Unless they temporarily make that Garfield Road two-way, you can't.
But you can't get two buses through there underneath the bridge. They're too wide.
Yeah, but one at a time, you probably could.
Yeah, but it's not set up for that. If you're asking for, I'll reach out and see what the end of last day of the school year is, like the 10th, I think, or something of June.
Yeah, it's, our construction will be going well ahead of that, so I'll have to have that from Northwest Ed to understand what that looks like.
All right, thank you. Please do that.
I, uh... Still in vacation. Still in vacation mode, I see. No, I enjoyed the week off. Nice to be back. Nice to see all of you.
Liar.
Liar.
Mr. Botch, you have anything to add?
No, I'm good. Thank you. I'm going to, I like going from the end and working away because TJ and I do all the talking all the time.
I do not since last week, so I'm good.
All right. Commissioner Nelson?
Well, I just want to report, looking at the weather report coming up, that there's going to be open skating all over the county if my yard is any indication of what it's going to look like. So let's not worry about the Civic Center. It's going to be everywhere. Hopefully not on our roads.
Hopefully not. Commissioner Henshaw?
All as well.
Awesome. Commissioner McAllister?
I'm good.
Commissioner Spence?
Nothing to share.
Mr. Morris?
Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Authority will meet in Traverse City this month. It'll be on the, I believe, it's the 20th. It will be at the Hall Street location, third floor, at 1:00 PM.
Yeah, I just want to share that I believe on the 12th, so next week's study session, we are going to be discussing opioid plan. Is that still correct?
Correct.
Okay, be good. A lot of people have been asking about that, and it was recently in the news as well, that that'll be coming to us for discussion next Wednesday, and that the, I can't remember if we gave much of an update on our ad hoc to discuss the process for spending the opioid and cannabis, but we did ask Administration to bring back something to the committee in April. So that's the timing of that, and we'll take input from the opioid meeting next week into consideration as we discuss the process and meet again in April. I don't know that we have a date set for that yet. I think we're waiting on that, but we did, we're going to meet again after spring break.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrew.
Only update related to the Pavilion CEO search. They had over 100 applicants for that position. Apparently, that is a desirable position. So that's just insightful for all of us in terms of large organizations on a hiring challenging position. So that's, that's going to be a slow process. I think they've got at least another month before they anticipate making decisions in that.
Fantastic. Well, the only thing I have to report, and I have a notice, we can get to that later, but is that you may have heard or may not have heard, the Village of Kingsley has a group coming in as a project where they have bought the Kingsley Club Golf Course, and they want to, and they bought some additional property and want to put in some executive custom homes, I guess, and they're trying to get water and sewer there. In the negotiation process, they have decided that they're coming to see us. They voted unanimously to push for annexation of Paradise Township property, when and if we're going to see that. But going to give you guys a heads up if you want to do some research on that, because it'll be certainly something interesting and have some fairly large implications where we move forward with that.
Oh, the Village wants to annex some township property.
That is correct. So I'm done with that. Second public comment?
If I could, I could ask Mr. Leahy to come to the podium and give you an update on septic.
Absolutely. My apologies, Mr. Leahy.
Good morning. No apologies from board, just, Mr. Alger, as I already put my notes away. So thank you for the time. So we've worked with admin to take a look at schedules regarding public hearing around onsite wastewater regulation. We did come to a date of the 23rd of April. That is a study session that we can host a public hearing to take input on the regulation.
What day was that?
That is April 23rd. Since it is a study session, this is a time to hear from the public, key partners, take input, and then we, as a department, can take that information back and take a look at the wording of the regulation and determine if we need to make any adjustments to that. That would be filed by May 21st, would be the adoption meeting. That is to potentially adopt a regulation that has gone through public comment and been presented to the board. The requirements around this are that the posting of the public hearing be 10 days prior to the hearing being held. So we currently have a team back at the Health Department who's putting the finishing touches on that notice to be, to be distributed to the public. I'd like to get that done earlier rather than later, and if we need to follow back up with a second posting, we feel comfortable doing so. So we're in line with those timelines and requirements. I did have a point of clarification. I like details. As I work through some things here, I wanted to share this with the board. At last meeting, I spoke about the difference between adoption and approval of a regulation, right? As I spoke with the State Health Department and looked at the Michigan Legislature, the MCL that this is under, that was really written to address boards of health that would then report to a board, right? So a board of health would adopt a regulation and then push it to a board for approval. Since our board serves as our board of health, that is for this board to consider is that may be one process. And again, I'm working through that. Please, you know, if you have any questions on that, don't hesitate to reach out to admin or myself on that. I think the dates, giving us time in between a hearing and the adoption are appropriate. Gives us time to really look at public comment, apply any adjustments. If there's significant adjustments, you know, we may need to come back to the board and talk those through. But just wanted to give a little update on to where we're at in this process.
Thank you. Commissioner Walter?
Question, is there any movement, again, with the new state legislature related to this? Have you heard anything in committee?
I haven't really heard much. You know, a couple directors of health departments, we met last week. There's a day in April coming up in Lansing, a day with legislatures and, and public health officials, and we did ask a few times if we felt like this was a pressing matter in Lansing, that we were going to see the reintroduction of this. Reading body language, I didn't get a ton of pressing matter on this, but I think we do anticipate something coming back around. Thank you.
Thanks.
I do have one more update.
More questions for Mr. Leahy? Is it related to Mr. Leahy?
I don't need notes, so no, I'm good.
Okay.
Whoa, all right.
Throwdown.
Well, thank you for your time, sir. Presentation.
Much appreciated.
No, I apologize. So Garfield Township passed their own soil erosion ordinance, so it does kind of relate to Mr. Leahy, but they did pass their own soil erosion ordinance on January 15th. That, that date was immediate in effect, so we have 50, we have roughly 50 permits for Garfield Township.
Forty-eight, yep.
For...
He had notes.
Might want to consider notes.
Yeah, I did say roughly, but yeah. So initially, when we talked to Mr. Barsheth, the new Garfield manager, he asked the EH department and staff to help a transition period, and because we lacked authority to do so, we created a scope of work with Mr. Forsythe and Cole Stoker, provided that scope of work to Garfield Township early last week, and they just, they, apparently, they just didn't want to engage in that discussion with us. So they have now received, as of yesterday at 1:00, received all of the permits and inspections that are based on Garfield Township for soil erosion and EH purposes, and we are in the process of moving the two surety, two surety bonds from our fund to theirs. So we're working with Cole Stoker to figure out exactly how we release those dollars. So if you hear anything from Garfield Township, that is, that's what, that's what's occurred.
Can you break that down into layman's terms for people? It feels like there's a lot in there that isn't being said.
Yep.
And could we get that in writing? Could we get a memo to what's going on?
I know, that feels like... I know, that feels like.
I feel like we're getting a lot coming at us with.
I, I can do a verbal, and then I will, I can absolutely follow up in a quick memo of what's happened. And so, the township, um, their board has passed, uh, an ordinance for them to be the enforcement entity of Part 91. That is soil erosion. So, when, um, a developer, a builder is to build a, a construction site, Part 91 requires the control of the sediment of that site. Um, I, I don't have the year in front of me, um, but we, as the Health Department, uh, took over that role a few, you know, I think it's closer to 10 years now, but I would have to look at my notes. And we've been managing that. I think we've been managing it pretty well. Um, but Township had some other ideas. So, they've made a, a ordinance or regulation in place, and their board has passed that. So, the, that effective date was in there. Uh, lack of effective date, actually, was what then ensured that the day in which they passed was the effective date. So, we did not have the legal authority at that time to, um, enforce Part 91. Luckily, the ground was, was still frozen, so there wasn't a lot of movement in that program right now. But to the points earlier made, the ground is thawing, and there are permits being applied for, right? And so, effectively, we have to move those to the township. That's not ours to enforce. And with that comes new permit applications and existing open permits. So, those existing permits have to be transferred to the township as well, so that they may enforce that. So, to Administrator Elders' point, there's a couple different layers of what those look like. Garfield Township has a lot of big development in there, right? So, there's a lot of large surety payments and bonds in there that are requirement of the program for a developer to put forth for good faith that they're gonna, they're gonna control the sediment of, of that site. We have released the bonds, uh, to those permit applicants. Uh, that is for the township to work that through with those permit applicants. There are a number within that 48 that there is a financial obligation to that. Someone has paid our office, um, for the, the surety payment of that work to be done. It's, it's a smaller number than the 48. It's in the single digits, but, um, we are working on that language right now to transfer, uh, those permits and also those funds. So, they're, uh, to the township. So, we've gotten a lot of input from, uh, did run it through our county finance, our Health Department finance. It's in front of legal right now to be finalized, and, you know, we do hope to finish this process up, end of this week, early next.
So, we first learned about this last year, not from Garfield Township. And the Garfield Township did what, they're complete within their rights to do what they did. It's completely their decision. We heard this from Eagle. When Eagle reached out to our EH department, asked them, "Do you have any concerns about Garfield Township's ordinance?" And asked for input, which the ordinance is appropriate. There was no real concern there. But we never really had conversation with Garfield Township officials to say, "We want to have our own ordinance, and how are we going to interact with that?" Had that happened, we probably would have had a transition period identified, but the, they, they did approve the ordinance. And that ordinance took effect on January 15th, essentially removing our authority to enforce the ordinance.
Any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Walter.
Yeah, what's the communication like to those 48, it sounds like, um, current, you know, projects in the works? Just, I'm looking at like a customer service perspective, even though we've passed them back on to Garfield, they probably maybe don't know about that, right? So, what does that look like for someone who's, has a project in the works with the county right now?
So, those are, um, one of the two documents that we have in front of legal right now for review and then to, to proceed forward. So, point of contact would be made with, with those permit holders, right? There wouldn't need to be a signature between the county and the township. And ultimately, notification would be made, um, to those applicants or those permit holders, um, that there has been a, a transition, right? Especially on those couple, there was bonds released, right? So, they need to be made aware that a bond was released and, you know, per the township's, um, requirements within their ordinance, you, you may need to address that. We did meet with, uh, the township on Monday of this week, and we did talk about, uh, some level of a informational campaign. You know, just informing the community for those that live in Garfield Township that there has been an adjustment. And for this need, um, you need to report to the township offices now, uh, to complete those permits. But, uh, we are addressing that just because of the time of the year with the thaw. There's a lot of, you know, I, I heard about the frost laws earlier, but builders are ready to go. Uh, and I'm anticipating the number of applicants coming across desks is gonna only increase from, from here. So, there are legal, you know, in review, separate documents for just the transfer of, uh, permits that, that have no financial transaction. And then there's a separate item that be reviewed for those that carry, uh, monetary value to be transferred.
Commissioner Flynn?
So, if we, to administration, so if we knew about this from Eagle, was the lack of communication with Garfield due to the transition of the manager and supervisor? Or did we just not reach out to ask questions? Because I know I brought it up when it was going to be passed, and everything was fine on the county side. So, I just.
The county didn't have.
Not create a transition plan.
We would have expected, we would have expected Garfield Township to have that discussion with us ahead of even going to Eagle. They, they chose not to, which they don't have to, to do that, but it did put us in a position. I, we have had verbal communication with the manager, and I don't think, I actually talked to Chuck, so it may have been a transition issue. But, um, that, that communication did not come from Garfield Township.
It would have been helpful, yeah.
Quite frankly, we didn't, in fact, you and I actually talked on the day of the meeting, just trying to figure out, are they gonna pass this, uh, today? And, uh, because it was creating a little bit of concern for us.
Commissioner Andrews?
Thank you. I sat on a committee, I believe it was in 2014, with then Commissioner Klaus, uh, then Judge.
Cooney.
Now Cooney, then Attorney Cooney, uh, and others for, for, for months. And we wrote a county, um, soil erosion ordinance that was different than the state minimum standards, uh, that passed this then board. Does Garfield Township follow the county ordinance, or does Garfield Township have its own ordinance, and is it different than the county's?
So, in reading the review of the ordinance to Administrator Elders' point, I mean, the first time we saw it was when Eagle was sending it for local Health Department to review. And it wasn't really an approval from the Health Department they were asking for, but they were asking for input. It read similar. I, you know, I believe the township pretty much took our, uh, Part 91 regulation language, to your point, that was drafted in 14, thank you for that, and applied it to the township. We take a very, um, we, we take a good, healthy approach to Part 91 and soil erosion enforcement, right? So, that was part of the conversations with the township, right? It's just the, the number of site checks that we do here in the county, um, that level of staffing need, uh, in, Garfield Township's a busy township. But to, to the point earlier, there were some adjustments that we made, uh, recently that didn't make their way into their language. And it would have been beneficial for us to maybe communicating that on the front end, so that we could at least advise them to look in certain areas. And then I think to the, uh, fee schedule that we had updated in, I believe it was '24, 20, end of '23, going into '24. And we, we really kind of took 10 years to learn some do's and don'ts around that and consolidated a little bit to help, help our community members applying for these, these permits. It really streamlined it, and we've got a lot of great feedback on that. It didn't really have any implications on the, the revenue side of it or the cost to the permits from the community. But it made it a lot more simplified for, uh, the community to understand what they were paying for, right? And, um, that didn't make its way in. So, you know, we have had that conversation with them about if and when you may want to look this way. But the regulation itself and the site checks and all that, I, I don't have any concern about that.
Related, um, to the fees and fee schedules, I anticipate the county has FTEs in place anticipating a certain number of inspections per year. My understanding is that this is mostly an enterprise fund and, in the sense that it basically pays its way. Garfield being one of the largest, uh, construction areas in our community. How does shifting, uh, permitting for Part 91 from the county to a, a separate municipality impact, you know, our, the fees for everybody else left in the county? If at all?
Yep, good question. So, I always hesitate when I hear that a, a program may pay for itself in cer, um, I don't, we don't have a ton of programs really that are paying entirely for themselves within, within the revenue captured. Really, it's a combination of revenue captured and grant dollars and, and some of those items with this program. We did a cost benefit analysis of this early on to kind of see the implications on our Environmental Health Division and that staffing plan. And, and there's plenty of work in this county happening right now that's gonna supplant tho, those funds. Could there be a little swing one way as we, you know, enter into this? Potentially. But, uh, we are using FTEs that are also doing programs in the townships with well and septic and other things that have a cost to them as well. It may increase a little bit of our throughput in some of those areas. So, um, we welcomed, you know, the township's, uh, move here, because I think there's some benefit that we may gain from that. But we need to kind of see 25 through. But I don't have a ton of concern at this time around the cost and, and the revenue versus expenditure for the division. I, I don't see that revenue going down with, as you drive around town and see all the individuals ready to apply for permits as we enter spring.
Sorry, my last question is, um, why was there a disert, dissatisfaction with the level of service? Or what was the root cause for driving, um, Garfield Township to not want to be partners with the county on this particular service anymore, to your knowledge?
I, I have not heard anything, uh, other than they wanted to do the permitting process for, uh, I don't even know if it was a speed issue. Chris, Mr. Barshaf has not expressed any dissatisfaction with the permitting process. Garfield Township also does their own building inspections. Um, they are one, they're the only entity, uh, that does not use our codes office for their inspection. So, it may be that they just want to be autonomous. I don't know if Commissioner Flynn has heard anything specifically, but we have not.
Commissioner Walter?
Have you had any follow-up conversations with administer, what are we calling him, Supervisor Barshaf? And is this the beginning of more, you know, or other town, do you anticipate other townships are interested in doing their own thing as well? Like, uh, you know, just for our own planning purposes and budgeting? It'd be good to keep a more open line of communication, it sounds like, and not be so surprised, so.
I've not heard anything from any other entity that they would like to do their own enforcement. Largely, our enforcement divisions with EH and Construction Code are, are received very well within the townships. But I, we can certainly, we, we talked to the township supervisors, we can certainly ask.
I think at this point, it sounds like we weren't proactive enough to, when we heard from Eagle, to reach out to them and find out, you know, how to make this process a little bit, or even the transition better, whatever it is. So, more of that proactive communication, I think, would be helpful, so that we're not quite as caught flat-footed next time.
I don't know if, I don't know if we, yeah, we were so much caught flat-footed. I would say, you know, I, our EH director reached out to me immediately when we got the email from Eagle. And we reached out to the township that day. Um, we've, we've extended meeting invites, right? We, we hosted them on Monday here on county office to kind of talk this through. You know.
I, I don't necessarily, I don't know if I characterize it as flat-footed. We, we had contemplated issues. We reached out to council for a scope of services that we could enter into an agreement with Garfield Township to help them through a transition process to include educating and training their inspectors. They have chosen not to avail us of that opportunity.
And, and we did spin that up quickly. I mean, it was, recognizing the need for a transition plan, right? That was our intention from the very beginning and communication with the township before we were made aware that they passed an ordinance on the 15th of January. This, there would need to be some transition plan. So, within that scope of work included, you know, some site check, you know, training of staff, right? And as Administrator Elders said, they chose to go a different way. I think we're still here to answer questions for them and be here to support. But at the end of the day, too, we, you know, we as the county have a lot going on, and we're, so, we, we did have that transition planning, and we, we handed them permits on, on Monday of this week. There were some notes in there on kind of first step, first and second steps that we recommend you taking. And, and that's, that's kind of where we ended on Monday, and I say we're working through those documents this week to try to push that through.
Thank you for your time. Just to remind everybody, we have two county commissioners that represent Garfield Township.
Three.
Three, my apologies, three. So, I imagine if Garfield Township wanted to reach out, they had plenty of opportunities to include us in that. So, let's move on.
Can I ask one quick follow-up question?
One.
Should there be a falling through the cracks, an inspection that doesn't happen, a, a breach that leads to, you know, um, uh, influencing a Kids Creek Tributary or something like that, right? Does the county have any exposure, given the, the sort of transitional phase of these permits?
I am not an attorney. Um, I, I don't believe there's exposure, given the language within Part 91 and the effectiveness of their ordinance. Uh, ultimately, that would, you know, it's, it's their ordinance in, in Part 91 to enforce at this time. All of those open permits, right? That is why we have a document in front of legal right now to review, so that there is a, there is a legal transfer of the permit signed by the county and the township. You are the responsible party now for this enforcement. They have oversight, right, with Eagle in the state on that. So, I, I, I'm sure there will be a process between the township and Eagle as they get their program spun up. We've been there, we've done that, so if the township has any questions on how to do that, they absolutely, um, can reach out to us. So, but in terms of exposure, too, uh, I'm not certain that we may have any of that.
Thank you, Mr. Leahy.
Appreciate the questions. Thank you.
For being here for that. Going to go on to second public comment. Anyone? By all means, please do, and anybody else, feel free to join up in line.
Kay Gallagher Ingraham.
Get your stool.
Yeah. Kay Gallagher Ingraham, Long Lake Township. Good morning, commissioners. Do you know where I just came from? Kind of fast. I'm glad your face right here. I was at the settlement conference that you were supposed to be attending with me. As you know, I have sued you for violating the Open Meetings Act because you repeatedly failed to participate in pending litigation against the county. Today was a court-ordered conference where at we were supposed to work towards settlement, and you didn't show. What does that say about you? When you get sued, you let your court administrator send the lawsuit to your insurance company who assigns counsel. After that, you just let the insurance company's attorney run the whole show. You'll be involved litigation for over a year, and this board will have never even discussed the lawsuit once during the year. Who does that? Instead of making your own decisions, you let your attorney make all your decisions for you. You are being led by the nose by attorneys who represent the best interests of the insurance company, instead of representing your best interest. Why do you do that? Why do you let your attorney make your litigation decisions for you? You are the client. You should be the one deciding what to do about the lawsuit when the county gets sued. The court's orders specify that you're supposed to be participating. The court ordered you to appear at mediation. You failed to appear, and you failed to delegate any authority for a representative to appear on your behalf. Just like today, the court ordered you to attend a settlement conference, and you are, again, ignoring the court's order. Who do you think you are? Why do you think that you have the right to be treated differently than every other lit, litigant in court? We, the people, elected you as commissioners to vote together as a public body to make the decisions for the county impending litigation. You are delicate in your duty to do so. You are letting the insurance company's attorney drag lawsuits on for longer than they have to, just so the attorney can make more money, which increases your insurance premium. The only benefit I can see is that allows you to hide your lawsuits from the public. If you have to hide your lawsuits from the public, what does that say about you? What does that say about the lawsuit? It says you know you're in the wrong. It says the lawsuit is right, and if the people hear about it, they might start holding you accountable. That is what the Open Meeting Act is meant to do. I have spent my money to have my attorney draft a pending litigation policy that lays out how you should be handling pending litigation so as to comply with the Open Meetings Act. If you adopt that policy, you can end the lawsuit. you can end the lawsuit. More importantly, if you adopt that policy, it should help you avoid being sued for violating the Open Meetings Act in the future. Neighbors shouldn't have to sue neighbors, and that's who you are first.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning. Bruce Moore in East Bay Township in Commissioner Henshaw's district. With respect to lawsuits and the ongoing beta litigation, I didn't actually begin attending county commission meetings until March of 2019 and missed all of the drama regarding the rescinding the appointment of Susan Rogers to the library board because of a conflict of interest by her husband voting for her appointment. This is central to the issue of Commissioner Jewett's appointment to the Beta Board, and honestly, I kind of think that the Beta Board has the wrong lawsuit, and were they to amend their complaint to address the conflict of interest issues, they would probably have a much stronger complaint. And I encourage everyone on the board to go back and read the legal opinions from January of 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Anyone else? All right. Notices? Anyone? Anyone but TJ? Just kidding.
We have a study session March 12th to deal with the opioid discussion. Sarah Bannon will be here, and we are also going to have the Trade Capital Airport staff present to discuss the progress on the negotiations with bonding.
Thank you. I just have one notice. A couple years ago, Commissioner Flynn and I and a couple of folks golfed in the first annual Veterans Golf Open that they had at Grand Traverse Resort. They took a year off, and so now they're having the second annual. I don't know how that works, but they're having the second one in September, so if you're interested, reach out to them. It benefits the veterans, and if you are a veteran, you get to participate. I believe at no cost, but they'll hold me to that. But definitely, it's September 10th, so. There is nothing else. We're adjourned.